Calling the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting to order for October 30th, 2018. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, 2018.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. October 16th, 2018.
I was not present, so I will not vote on those minutes.
I was second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. October 25th, 2018.
So moved? Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am. Go to the podium and identify yourself for the record. Please.
Hi there. Jennifer Mathien, 159 Stainer Drive. Hoping for a quick clarification on a comment made during the last Board of Selectmen meeting. I understand that the Selectmen-appointed task force made some recommendations back in July regarding the compressor, but can you clarify whether you plan on putting that on the agenda in November to decide on those?
Not at this time. We're consulting with council, and we're reviewing our options.
Okay. And you are aware of the time-sensitive?
We are.
Which means if it doesn't come up in a meeting, that's essentially you deciding not to go forward with the recommendations?
We're aware.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Next item on the agenda: Tax classification hearing. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome again.
Good evening.
Perennial discussion.
I'm Rick Nolan, the Director of Assessing. Before we get into the classification here, I just want to say a few words. I'd like to introduce two of my board members that are here today: Al Chambers and Christine Roberts. They're both new members of the Board, the chair, and Greg Hall couldn't make it tonight. And I'd like to welcome Chris and Al. And also like to introduce, next to me is Erin Walsh from our office.
Good evening.
Erin helped me prepare the presentation for tonight's meeting. Many of you know Erin. If you stopped in the office doing abatement or exemption. Erin just completed her course requirements for her Mass General Law 40-56. So she should have that, hopefully within the next month or two. Each year, we are required to have values and growth certified by the Department of Revenue. Every five years, there's a full certification, the next one being in fiscal '23. For fiscal '19, our values and growth have been approved. The financial team is working on the recap and tax rate, and we'll announce the rate as soon as it's certified by the Department of Revenue. The values and property information on the current website for fiscal '18. We will be updating the website prior to the tax bills going out at the end of December. We suggest that everyone look at the updated website when the time comes to check the property information. If the information is incorrect, or if you believe the value is incorrect, you have the month of January 2019 to apply for an abatement. The application must be returned in more postmark by 2/1/19. Applications will be available online as well as in our office. A reminder, there is still time to apply for an exemption, which is April 1st, 2019, if you haven't already done so. And if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to contact our office. The purpose of the classification hearing. A classification hearing is held to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes per Mass General Law 40-56. This does not change the total levy of the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class. A split rate does not increase revenue to the town, and it doesn't determine the tax rate for the town. The role of the Board of Assessors. There are three phases of the classification process. The town must value all property at full and cash value. The town must classify every parcel according to use, and the town must allocate its tax levy among the various classes of property. On October 23rd, 2018, the Board of Assessors met. They discussed and reviewed the classification issue and options. A motion was made, and a vote was unanimous, to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to leave it as a single rate for fiscal '19. A prior special committee formed to review classification options determined that the percentage of commercial and industrial properties to residential properties would have to change dramatically to consider a split rate option. For fiscal '19, commercial and industrial make up approximately 12 percent of the taxable property. This percentage has not changed in the past two -- changed dramatically in the past two years, and it's not expected to change dramatically in the near future.
We put together some estimates on what if they were to shift the tax rate based on a $700,000 assessment and a current tax rate of $11.77. So a shift of 10 percent would decrease the average residential taxes by $105 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by $2,281. A shift of 25 percent would decrease the average residential taxes by $266 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by $5,733. And a shift of 50 percent would decrease the average residential taxes by $532 annually and increase the average commercial taxes by about $11,485. And recently, we just had a local business owner who came into the office to express his gratitude for keeping the same tax rate. He's owned a small business in town for the past 30 years, and he spoke about the money that local businesses contribute to our schools, including donations and raffles and adds to yearbooks and sports and theater programs. And he said he's always been happy to contribute to the local fundraising events and felt that if he was paying a higher tax rate, he may not have as easily contributed.
Questions from my colleagues.
No, I just, you know, with over 80 percent of our tax base being residential, to significantly shift the tax burden, to make a significant impact on residential property tax owners would just be overbearing for commercial property owners. So it's -- I concur with your recommendation, and I thank you for the great work that you do.
And, you know, I know that you do this periodically, and periodically, we're all -- we're asked about whether we have a split rate. So I do think this sort of diligence on our part and information on our part is essential to have, you know, in our files. I agree with Mary. You know, the three of us, I think, are very cognizant of preserving the commercial tax base in town. You know, as you point out, I think they are part of the very fabric of this town. So, you know, to overly burden them for what is a relatively modest decrease in the residential tax base, you know, to me seems detrimental to our commercial residents. The other thing I guess I'd like to say is Rick participated with me, along with a group of folks here in Town Hall, in trying to think through other tax breaks for residents of Hingham. There are some additional tax breaks that -- and tax exemptions that the legislature has made available to municipalities with respect to veterans. And there's an additional special act avenue that we are continuing to explore with respect to circuit breaker eligible elderly folks. So, you know, while we're not, you know, while I certainly wouldn't recommend taking action to split the tax rate, we are continuing to work, and we are cognizant of the tax burden on our residents.
My position remains unchanged. I'm sure you know what it is by now. Anybody in the audience get a comment, questions? Okay. I'll take a motion.
I move that the residential factor be set at 1.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for the work that you do. Thank you to the blanket. Okay.
Can we do the forecast next? Just because Sue is here.
I take a item on the agenda a little out of order, and that's the 4K forecast update. Sue, would you join us at the table, please? Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want, this is the annual, this is the first presentation of the annual forecasting process, where the town likes to forecast its revenue projections and get an understanding of the anticipated revenue for the coming budget season. That said, I'll give you the highlights. The total anticipated forecast as of right now is $112,664,462. We are looking at a total anticipated uses of funds in town at $112,442,932 for an excess of $221,529. I would add significant asterisks to that. This is extremely early. These revenue projections are far from final. We, the uses component to this is, you know, it's the town meeting approvals plus, basically, plus 2 percent. There's an entire budget season and budget process that needs to be undertaken in order to understand that. So revenues will likely change, will definitely change, and the uses will definitely change over time. One thing I will point out, though, is that some good news is in the state aid number that we have this year, the state has increased its Chapter 90 support by $281,000, which is always welcome. So, thank you to whoever managed to get that through.
And that's in the state aid number?
Yes, it's built in. That's right, yeah. So again, this is very, this is very early. We'll have, we'll have far better numbers in early February, but it's a starting thing. I have given this presentation to our finance team and our forecast team, as we call them, some members of the school department, the advisory committee, and Chairman Haley is the default member of the forecast meeting, is the chairman.
But he's an important default member.
Yes. Yes. I do. Thank you, counsel.
I got your back.
Yes.
So it's probably just too early to get into the minutia on this, but local receipts, you're carrying out at 2.5 percent of, what is, what's that parenthetical after local receipts?
In the outgoing years, we raise it 2.5 percent.
I see you raise it 2.5 percent.
From 21 through 24, yeah.
We haven't gone through local receipts compared to this past year.
Okay.
So everything will change.
Okay.
So if you look at the last page, the local receipt projection goes up to 2020.
Gotcha.
The 21 through 25, we just had to project.
Okay.
And the major categories here are motor vehicle, ambulance, building permits.
Yep. Okay.
One thing I think we want to be careful of is that some of the building permit revenue in the last couple of years has been one-time for those big projects. So, you know, just like we want to be careful with the new growth, we want to be careful to not assume that all of that building permit activity will continue.
Yeah, you'll see in FY '22, the base, new growth number is $550,000 projection, whereas in '20 and '21, it's $950,000. That's a $400,000 increase for, to compensate for the two one-time, for the two years of one-time money from the three main developments up on through 3A. So.
One of the things that was pointed out was that the 10 percent has been met, so the likelihood of a big project like that in the future is not high.
The what?
10 percent threshold.
Yeah.
Affordable housing.
Yep.
Yeah, good point. That's a good point. Yep. Okay. Well, this, we, I'm sure we'll all have questions, but it's always good to get started.
It is.
Sue, when will we start to hear about, just on the expense side, just to talk about benefits for a second, when will we get a sense of when the GIC will issue rates? And is that like early '19?
Yes, they start, I'm not sure exactly what they have to do for this year. I don't know if they go out to bid this year or not. They do usually set rates the first week in March.
So we, we project 10 percent. It's just our standard operating practice. We have no information to change that yet. So, and there, you know, Mayflower, back when we were in Mayflower, we had a seat there that was, gave us a little bit more of an insight to the future plans. GIC is a very large organization, so it's hard to get that.
And I would just remind my colleagues, this is a year when we have a full, you know, actuarial analysis. So in terms of OPEB, you know, last year, we looked and said, this year, we need to do the full actuarial analysis to see about changes to our funding schedule. But I think we should not be surprised if our, if a new funding schedule for OPEB requires additional money beyond what's currently carried in the forecast. We increased it by about $250,000 last year, but we thought that was a start.
Anybody from the audience like to? All right. Well, thank you, Sue. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay. Next item. Housing Authority, fill a vacancy. People hear from the Housing Authority? Okay. How are we gonna do this?
Candidates go outside.
Want to have the members maybe sit in the front row, and then the applicants join us at the table, one at a time?
Yeah. I think those that are presenting themselves for consideration, I'd respectfully ask them to wait outside so that we can call them in one at a time. And I'll go to the, you want to do this at the podium and have some of the Housing Authority people sit next to you?
Well, I was, we can do that, or ask the Housing Authority to sit as a board in the front row, and then the applicants here. No, they don't have a microphone. Bring them up here. They can interview from the podium.
Yeah, and we can bring the.
You can get more chairs?
Yeah.
All right. So if the board members want to join us up here.
We can move down.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Bob. Ladies and gentlemen, we're interviewing for a vacancy on the Housing Authority. We've invited the Housing Authority to join us at the table here. And as I understand, it's Mr. Keys, who's the chair. Is that right? Ms. Björ, Ms. Lauder, and Mr. Watson, welcome.
Welcome.
We have four candidates for this position. That would be Elizabeth James, Sharon James, Gregory O'Meara, and Lori Taylor. We'll interview them, and we'll decide. So with that, I would like to ask Ms. Elizabeth James to join us. Question, please.
So I think.
Are we filling an expired, or an expired term?
Yes, I think Michelle's actually got a presentation.
So in order to frame the conversation tonight, we thought we'd do a short PowerPoint to sort of trace the history of the five seats and the terms connected with each seats before we talk about the appointment and the vacancy before us.
Okay.
So the Housing Authority Board is, the Housing Authority is managed by a board of five members who are elected and/or appointed for five-year terms. One member is appointed by the Department of Housing and Community Development, more commonly referred to as the governor's appointment. Three members are elected by town election, and there is a change recently in the law so that one member is elected by other tenants or appointed by the selectman if no election is held pursuant to regulations that should be adopted by DHCD. To date, DHCD has not adopted these regulations to provide for the election or appointment of a tenant to the board, which has caused a little bit of confusion. So to understand where we are today, we thought we'd step back a few years to be able to trace these seats. So you see the five seats on the board right there, and Ms. Lauder is in the seat. She is the member appointed by DHCD. In January 2016, this is what the board looked like, and shortly thereafter, Mr. Connolly resigned from his seat. In February 2016, at a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority Board, Davlin Cooper was appointed to fill the remaining term of that seat until the April 2016 election. In April 2016, Ms. Cooper ran for and won the seat that she was filling, with the term expiring in 2017. In the fall of 2016, Mr. Wise resigned from his seat. I should have called this presentation "Musical Chairs," but hopefully you're all with me so far. So at another joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority Board, Elizabeth James was appointed to fill that seat until the April 2017 election. In February of 2017, this is when things got interesting. The state-issued guidelines, let me just find the language, "to clarify the election of Housing Authority Board members in towns, since DHCD still had not promulgated regulations for the tenant election procedure." The state's February 15, 2017 communication stated that if a town's election is more than 64 days away, which it was, "do not include the position of local Housing Authority Board member on the ballot if there is a seat set to expire that spring." This is April 2017. As you can see, Ms. Cooper's seat, the one that's now highlighted in green, was set to expire. So what happened in April 2017, Ms. James did not run for the seat there, and Ms. Cooper, since her seat was being pulled back by the state, if you may, she ran for the other seat with the term expiring in 2020, which has created the vacancy that's before us today. In early 2018, Ms. Cooper resigned from her seat. In April 2018, at the town election, I think everyone's still with me, Ms. Björ ran for that seat. At the same election, Mr. Watson's seat was set to expire, and he ran for another term in that seat. That brings us to where we are today. Mass General Law states that if there's a vacancy in a board consisting of two or more members, the remaining members shall give written notice within one month of the vacancy to the Board of Selectmen, who, with the other members of that board, after one week's notice, are able to fill the vacancy. The Board of Selectmen did not receive written notice of this vacancy on the board, and in September 2018, sent a letter to the Housing Authority as a courtesy to invite them to participate in the joint meeting of the boards tonight to make this appointment. And that's where we are today. So this is the seat before us tonight, and there are four candidates to consider.
Very helpful.
So are we saying that's an unexpired term? Or expired term?
I think it's, it's the seat that will expire in 2022, so I guess it's the unexpired term. And I think it's important to clarify that since this appointment is under Mass General Law Chapter 41, Section 11, and not Mass General Law Section 121, 5A, or whatever it is, I know there's been some discussion about a requirement to appoint a tenant to the seat, and that is not the case.
Can I add one thing? That was excellent. I think you put it up on the, on the website, so those of us that have been trying to do this.
Sorry.
That'd be great. There is a bill winding its way through the legislature right now, and a big shout-out to Senator Patrick O'Connor, because he is co-sponsoring it, that talks about how the tenant seat will be filled, and it comes up. Did you catch it?
Yep.
Did you go through that here?
Yep.
And basically, the tenants will provide the Board of Selectmen with a list, and it's anticipated it will be more than one name. And the board will then select, which is what happens in the cities that have tenants now, and there's tons of them. So, thank you. That was excellent, though.
And thank you for that legislative clarification, too. I think that's important.
Karen, explain. Are we obliged now to have a tenant? Remember, I keep hearing that we do, and I keep hearing, well, the method of choosing hasn't been adopted yet. Or we just, we are?
Yeah, so the short answer, Jim, as confusing as all this is, is no. We are not obliged to appoint this seat, appoint a tenant to this seat. And I guess, you know, one of the ways I've tried to think about this is, because there is pending legislation that will ultimately require the appointment of a tenant, you know, to be, to be honest with you, where I'm coming out is, I think there are an array of skill sets that the Housing Authority requires to function at an optimal level. And tenant representation certainly is, is one of those. And I know that you have folks that will attend as, as non-voting tenant representatives to inform you of the concerns of the tenant at the Housing Authority. But for purposes of the board structure, it seems to me it may be important to consider other skill sets and not just, not just the status of tenant for this particular seat. So, so no, you don't, you do not, we do not have to appoint a tenant to the seat. And as a matter of fact, if we do appoint a tenant to the seat hypothetically, you could end up then sort of overweighted in tenant representation on the Housing Authority. Because if, and I believe it will occur, if the legislation is, is passed by Senator O'Connor, who's been at this for at least a year, we will be required to make a tenant appointment at that time.
And if you do, what happens to the person you're appointing now that is not a tenant?
So that seat, my understanding from what the email said, and Irma, jump in, what would happen, Bob, is just like what happened to Dave Alene, the legislation would say whatever seat is expiring would then become the tenant-appointed seat. So, you know, if it happened in this election cycle, that would be the seat that you currently sit in. If it's the next election cycle, it's whatever other seat is up. So this person would serve till 2022, and then, and then would have to either run for election, or someone else could run for election when that term expires. So the appointment we're gonna make tonight is not dependent on any, any particular status and would be through 2022.
We ready?
About as clear as mud, right?
Clear as mud, right.
I guess I just don't fully understand why the Chapter 5 rules, which do specifically say that the selectmen should only appoint someone if there already is a tenant on the board, don't apply here.
Well, so you weren't alone. I, I asked council that question at least once, if not probably three times. That particular aspect of the statute only kicks in if and when DHCD promulgates regulations. So 5A isn't activated because DHCD hasn't done its job or didn't do its job appropriately. So 5A is inactive, essentially. So there is, and, and like I said, I guess at the beginning, and Michelle alluded to, we're also not making the appointment pursuant to 122, 5A. We're making the appointment pursuant to 41, Section 11. And so that, that doesn't specify any particular status for that appointment, you know, other than the interview of the folks that come forward.
And then if the O'Connor bill is passed, is it the next time there's a vacancy that it's a false?
That's exactly right, Jim. So you, you did get it. You're probably the only one up here that did, but.
To repeat that.
So if, if and when the legislature does pass the clarification to 120, 121, 5A, and promulgates regulations, my, what I would anticipate is that it's the next seat expiring in the rotation that would be pulled back and become the tenant-appointed seat. That's, I mean. Which is what happened in the past. Which is what happened in the past, and which is, in the correspondence we've received from Senator O'Connor, is the approach that he's pursuing with respect to legislation.
I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson for her work as the liaison to the Housing Authority. Clearly, she's been working hard at that. Why don't we just start with Elizabeth James? Wait, do you want to put her at the podium?
I think, I think so, yeah.
If you'd be nice enough to go to the podium. How are you tonight?
Very good. My name's Elizabeth James, 30th Act Street, in a mess.
Greetings. Thank you for stepping forward. As you know, we're interviewing for a position on the Housing Authority. This is a joint meeting between the Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen. Perhaps you'd be nice enough to give us some background about yourself and the reasons why you wish to be considered for this position.
Okay. My background, I'm a Hinghamite, born and raised, lived in California for a few years, came back here in my early twenties. I have lived, I am a resident of the Hexter Park. I have lived there for the past 10 years. In my time at the Hexter Park, I have been treasurer, president, and vice president of the Tenants Association. Excuse me, I'm very nervous. I don't do public speaking well.
You're doing a great job here. You're doing fine.
During that time, when I was president of the tenants' associations, we had many functions for the seniors. We had a great working relationship. We had a great working relationship with the housing board and the director at the time. We had a different director when I first started living there. We've continued to have a wonderful working relationship with our current director and with our board, as far as the tenants go. Unfortunately, we have no tenants' association now, and we have not since I stepped down from presidency probably three years ago. And I do feel that is why I am the better candidate for this position, simply because I am a resident of the park. My strongest, my heartfelt want for the residents of, all of our senior residents of Hingham and our veterans of Hingham, is to be able to be comfortable in this town and know that they have affordable housing to go to in the future, when they can no longer afford to live in their own homes. I'm an advocate for the seniors and our veterans.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from my colleagues? Or maybe we'll start with the Housing Authority first.
I've worked with Beth a long time, so I really have no question. Take up your time.
Ms. Bier?
I've enjoyed talking with her over the past few weeks.
Ms. Lauder?
Would you be disappointed?
Yes.
I have four questions for everybody, same questions. And Beth, I've enjoyed working with you as well.
Thank you.
What skills do you have to bring to the Housing Authority to move us forward to be a better board?
I have great people skills, skills as far as, from what I can see from the board, I mean, if you, like, secretarial skills, yes, I can type a letter. I was a credit manager for a multimillion-dollar company in California, so I do have some knowledge in that area. And as I said, my main concern is our seniors and veterans of Hingham.
Second question, what have you done to prepare for tonight's interview?
I've lived at Hexter Park for 10 years, really simply. There's nothing I can do to prepare to get over my nerves. I had a whole speech I was going to say, and, sorry, I think the same thing happened to me last time when I was here before you guys.
No, you're doing fine.
Will you commit to attending all the training required, which, by the way, this is a little-known secret, there is a tremendous amount of training that we have to go to. There are a series of five half-day courses. This is much more complex than anything I've run into, including my own, when I ran all the customer service. Town budget is simple compared to this. Okay, so you've already, okay. Have you attended the Housing Authority meetings, which...
Yes.
Okay. Those are my four. For everybody.
Not all of them, but I'd say a majority of them over the years. When we had a tenants' association, that was, half of the point was the tenants would come together, we'd discuss many issues that were going on in the park, whether the tenants had been responded to on certain requests by the Housing Authority, if they hadn't. It would come before the tenants' association, and then myself and the vice president would go to the board meetings, and it would be discussed at the board meetings.
Beth, what do you think the prospects are for getting an active tenants' association again? Because I mean, you sort of body it, but there isn't, technically, there's no formal association now.
No, there is not. Honestly, I think with a little bit more time and a little bit more push, I do feel we can get one. There's one woman, a resident there, that would be a great, she'd be a great president. She's well-received by all the tenants. She doesn't get into the, it sounds so junior high, but the clique thing, and believe it or not, at a senior park, there is more of a clique thing than there ever was in kindergarten. So I do feel, I do feel that she would, I know she's right on the cusp of stepping up, and I feel if I supported her, as far as really helping her get things going, I'm sure we could convince her to.
And get back to having some...
Yeah. I think that's one of the most important things for the park. And for you guys, for the working relationship for the board with residents.
You were appointed to the board for a period of time, right, Beth?
Who's talking?
Me, over here.
Oh, I couldn't see anybody.
You were appointed and served on the board for a little bit. I just was wondering if you'd talk a little bit about that experience and how that might inform your service, should you be appointed tonight.
I stepped down at that time for a couple of reasons. Number one reason was I had a couple of health issues at the time, and I would really like to see our board have better working relationships with other boards in the town of Hingham. I would like to see other boards support Hingham Housing Authority a lot greater than what they do. That would be another one of my priorities, or my personal priorities, is to have better working relationships, because I can say, over the last two years, things seem to have gone south rather than the other way with different boards together. My other priority, well, not priority, but concern, would be, now I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. Well, you skipped right into my other question, which was, what are your goals for the board? So I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
A lot of my questions were answered. I would just say, first, I'd start by saying, thank you for coming forward. It's, we so appreciate when people come to volunteer, and having an interview in public on TV is not an easy thing to do. And, yes, it's on TV, too. I'm sorry. So on Friday night, Friday night at 8:00, you'll be able to catch the rerun, but thank you, thank you for stepping forward, and thank you for being willing to serve. I would just ask, maybe in closing, if there were a couple adjectives that, you know, that you would use to describe yourself, what would they be?
And committed.
Thank you very much.
Ms. James, I enjoyed talking to you the last time, and I enjoy talking to you tonight. I think we're all set.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming in.
You did a great job.
Okay, the next person, Mr.?
Sharon.
Sharon James. You know her, too?
I've emailed her.
So. If you go to the podium, ordinarily, I'd invite you to sit, but the seats are taken with the mics, and just identify yourself, if you would. Give us a little bit of background and the reasons why you'd like to be considered for the position on the Housing Authority. Thank you.
So my name is Sharon James, no relation to Beth James, who just left the room. I have lived in Hingham for 20 years. That makes me a brand newcomer, right? Both my children graduated from Hingham High School. They had a fabulous experience, still friends with people they were friends with then. So I was, I'm an attorney. I worked for State Street Bank for 26 years, and I was general counsel of a subsidiary of State Street, and they sold the subsidiary. So all, most all of the staff side people were laid off. So, once that happened, I thought, I would love to work in Hingham, and I just was poking around on Indeed and putting in jobs in Hingham, and I also wanted to work part-time while I sort of reevaluated what I was doing. And there was a job at the Housing Authority, and I was hired to help with a variety of administrative tasks, including reviewing applications and determining the qualifications of the applicants. And it was a life-changing experience for me. It was incredible. The people are amazing, and some of them are mentally ill, and some of them are cranky, but still they're wonderful. And so even though the Housing Authority is a landlord, it's not a pure, traditional landlord situation. So unfortunately, I was laid off from my job at the Housing Authority, and when I heard about this, I thought it would be a way for me to participate. Housing has always been an incredibly important part of my life. My mother's father was a general contractor, and she grew up in between the Depression and World War II, and they lived in partially-built houses that her dad was building for someone. And she impressed upon us our entire life the importance of housing and how that made her feel to live in a house with three walls. So additionally, my sister is the executive director of the Provincetown Housing Authority. My disabled brother lived for 26 years in the Quincy Housing Authority, and I have worked with them quite a bit, helping him. I also have another disabled sibling. My sister lives in Duxbury, in a Housing Authority building. So I'm passionate about people and what I can do to help them and the town and housing.
Thank you, Ms. James. Thank you very much. Mr. Keys?
Yes, again, I work with Chevy, so I'll pass.
Ms. Bier?
I don't have any questions this time. I'll ask the four questions.
Please do.
Sherri, it's so nice to see you, and thank you. And we should let the Board of Selectmen know, she was laid off because we ran out of money, which is another challenge the Housing Authority faces. I'm asking the same four questions, Sherri, for everybody. What skills do you bring to the Housing Authority to move us forward and be a better board?
So I'm an attorney, and I'm a corporate actions financial attorney. So I'm familiar with documentation that might be involved. I'm familiar with some of the real estate issues that come up, including eviction. And I'm also a calm person. So I think that that's an important thing to bring, too, because it's important for the tenants to be in a calm environment, and I think I would bring that.
Thank you.
I'm also nice and cooperative and easy to get along with.
Thanks a lot.
You got to speak up for Jim.
I'm sorry. I said, Jim, I am nice, cooperative, and easy to get along with.
And easy to hear, too.
What have you done to prepare for tonight's interview?
Well, I went back and I read the bylaws, so I am procedurally a little curious as to how this happened, but we don't have to get into that. And then just, you know, I'm familiar with the 667 housing and the 705 housing for families, and just took a look at some of that again, and 30B. And I also have done some of the training that would be required for a board member.
And you've walked into question three. Will you commit to attend all the required training?
Absolutely. It's critical.
Have you attended Housing Authority meetings?
Yes. Yes, I have.
Okay. Beth, thank you.
Thank you. Jim? Jim?
I don't have much that hasn't been asked, because we're impressed by your background and your past role there. And just as a side comment, I think the lack of money that led to your change of status was not voluntary. Your loss of some income you had coming in from the agency, and, you know, it was really a totally no-fault disaster.
I understand.
No, I think you've covered me pretty well.
Good.
So you've talked a little bit about your professional experience. I was wondering if there are some volunteer experiences that you've had that would sort of inform your work as a member of this committee?
So some of my volunteer work has been with the Quincy Housing Authority, volunteering to organize social activities, being supportive with some of the building that my brother was in's concerns, and now I'm kind of blanking, but I do have other volunteer experience.
And how about your goals for the board, Sharon?
My goals for the board would be to work operatively for the benefit of all the tenants.
Thank you, Sharon. Just to follow up on that, as, you know, through the work that you've done with the Housing Authority, what do you see as some of the big challenges that the Housing Authority faces, particularly over the next couple of years, when this term, you know, for this term that we're trying to fill?
So money, resources, the ability to make repairs in a timely manner, which I think that the facility staff has done, yeoman's work to get done, but it's still difficult and challenging. I don't know what the town has planned in terms of creating more space for people who need housing, but that would be a couple.
Thank you.
What were the dates of your employment with the Housing Authority, now?
Sure, thanks. I worked there from September 2017 through May 22 of 2018. So about nine months.
Okay. And in your capacity to involve your work, have you done any board work, served on any boards?
I was on the board of a musical singing group that I was part of a chorus. I was on the board of the Dorchester Youth Collaborative, which was for at-risk teens in Fields Corner. And then, obviously, in a non-volunteer capacity, I've been on corporate boards.
Well, thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, good evening. Thank you very much for coming in. Format is pretty straightforward. We'd ask that you give us some background about yourself, the reasons why you'd like to be considered for the position. The Housing Authority will ask some questions, we will ask some questions.
Okay. My name's Greg O'Mara. I currently live at 5 Cushing Street in Hingham. I grew up in Hingham on Liberty Pole, then lived at Cushing Street, and then went off to school, came back in '82, and lived in North Street, and I went back at Cushing Street, so I've made a full circle. I've been a practicing attorney since 1978. I worked in Washington for a while, and then I came back here. I worked at a big law firm in Boston. And maybe 1981 or '82, I started my own law firm, which has been in Hingham for probably 25 years. I'm still practicing despite my wife wanting me to retire. When I was in Washington, I was on a congressional staff, and I did a lot of stuff with the Somerville Housing Authority, the Cambridge Housing Authority, and a little bit with the Boston Housing Authority. I also worked with private developers on Section 8 proposals, but that's like 35 years ago, so, or more. So I assume the Section 8 stuff's changed a little bit, but I know it's still around. I've been very active in Hingham in the past. I have to look at this. I have to look at this, because I stopped doing a lot of stuff, but now I want to come back. I was on the Hingham Democratic Town Committee 11 years, '79 to '88. I was the chair at one point. The Board of Selectmen appointed me to the Mass Special Commission on Development of Boston Harbor to represent Hingham. I did that for five years, 1983 to 1988.
Could you say it again? But that was?
It was the Massachusetts Special Commission on Development of Boston Harbor.
Thanks.
And I was the Hingham Selectmen's representative to that commission. I was on the Long Range Planning Committee for Bearcove Park for half my life, and I was chair at one point. And somewhere in there, I was on the Rink Committee, where we tried to build a town rink at the South Shore Country Club that lost at town meeting on a decisive vote, as I recall.
Not for lack of trying, though.
Right. And my wife was very active for a period of time here on Advisory Committee for a couple of terms. So while she was doing that, it didn't make sense for both of us to be out every night. So I stopped participating in a lot of these things. I then submitted a talent bank application recently, last year, and indicated housing was one of the areas of interest. So I would... There's an opening. I got some time to serve. I have a varied background. I did real estate work at one point in my law practice, but it's touched down a little bit. Now I do mainly small business, criminal defense work, and that's about it. But I did, at one point, I represented the MBTA Credit Union and the Bank of New England on real estate matters. And I still do small closings of residential homes. So I've lived here a long time. I'd like to get back in the mix. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Keys?
Yes, ma'am. Can you tell me what your interest is in housing? I understand you worked at Housing Authorities, but they were paid jobs. How about...
No, I didn't work for them. I assisted them with the federal government. I worked for the government. I worked for Congress. And I helped the Somerville Housing Authority, the Cambridge Housing Authority, and the Boston Housing Authority through the labyrinth of HUD back in the '70s.
I know, but they were paid jobs.
I had a paid job helping these people, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Buer.
I was actually particularly interested to hear that you have experienced sort of developing additional properties for the Housing Authority. I'm sure you know that there's some sort of issues going on with the Selectmen's parcel. Do you think that your experience could help us sort of weed through what's going on there?
Well, I wouldn't say I had experience developing properties. I had experience helping people who were trying to develop properties. So I wasn't hands-on in developing. Again, I was assisting them, trying to comport with federal regulations in what they were trying to do. Particularly Somerville Housing Authority was in a bad strait back in the '70s. And Harry Spence was a director. I don't know if you knew him, but he went on to bigger and better things. Most recently, he ran the court system for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But he... So I helped Somerville a lot, Cambridge a lot. Boston, since Boston was a lot bigger, they had other people helping them, but I did help there. But again, it was a long time ago.
Thank you.
Greg, I'm asking everyone the same four questions.
Okay.
So thank you for coming.
Okay.
What skills do you bring to the Housing Authority to move us forward to be a better board?
Well, I've been on a number of boards. I've been on a hospice board. I'm on the Hingham Community Center board for a long time.
I like that comparison.
Well, I was actually one of the first hospices in Massachusetts. And it was very, it was in the formative years of hospices in Massachusetts. It was the Archdiocese Hospice run out of St. John's in Brighton. So I was on that board. I'm the Board of Community Center. I was in Board of Trustees in my college. So I've been on a lot of boards. I think I have good analytical skills. I can look at some issues and I think I can narrow them down pretty quickly and make decisions.
What have you done to prepare for tonight's interview?
I rewrote my resume.
Good answer. Will you commit to attending all the training that's required of Housing Board members?
Absolutely.
Have you attended Housing Authority meetings?
Not in Hingham.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jim?
I've known you a little bit for a long time, so I'm pretty impressed. But I'm just wondering, do you see your role on the board as a resource or a leader or a facilitator?
I try to make boards work that I'm on. I don't want to blow anything up. If there's a problem, I'd like to try to resolve it.
Facilitator, maybe.
That's a good word, yeah.
Actually, Jim, a follow-up on Jim's question. I'm interested in a little more detail perhaps on your board work and also if you've been on a board that's run into some roadblocks and maybe what your role has been in facilitating that.
Okay. Well, when I was on Board of Trustees of a college, they had a lot of staff people that did a lot of the work. So you just basically looked at reports. There were some problems, but again, it was a pretty big board and it was a lot of staffing. But I've been on the Community Center board for a long, long time. And as you may or may not know, it's run into some problems lately. And we're trying to work those through so that the place will get back to its vitality. And I was just at a meeting last night on that. So I spent a lot of time on that, to tell you the truth, with a bunch of other, obviously, interested Hingham people.
And you've been in town a long time. You've had a sort of a wide variety of volunteer experiences. You know, how do you see those relationships being a resource for you in serving on the Housing Authority Board?
Well, I think, you know, I think everything in Hingham is interconnected. So, you know, the more people you know and the better off you are. Just out in the hallway there, there were people talking to me about things I'd forgotten about, actually. So, you know, I think everything's, everything needs to be facilitated and interconnected. I mean, nothing's a silo in town government, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Greg, three adjectives that you would use to describe yourself?
Short, gray, and fat.
And apparently, no sense of humor.
Any more questions?
And strong. Thank you so much for coming in, Greg.
Hey, we all set?
We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's funny. We got one more to go.
Yep.
Hello.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
The format is relatively informal. We're asking people to describe a little bit about themselves and why they want to be considered for the Housing Authority position, after which point the Housing Authority will have an opportunity to ask any questions it wishes, and we'll follow up.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Lori Taylor, and I've lived in Hingham for 41 years. I moved to Hingham when I was 25. And shortly thereafter, my mother came to live with me, to spend her retirement with me for 25 years. So I had a senior living with me for 25 years, until she passed away. And she was a wonderful lady, and she lived by the golden rule, and I am delighted that I had her for a mom. My husband was also 25 years older than me. And the last eight years of his life, he had cancer. So I have my mom, who had a disability, and I had my husband, who had cancer. So that was a full house. And then I had a child, who had a disability. So that's an even fuller house. So I've had plenty of hands-on experience, living with people who are seniors and who also have disabilities. And of course, I'm a senior now myself. And of course, I had to earn a living like everyone else. My background is finance and business. And you can see from the Talent Bank application that I went to Wharton. And while I was at Wharton, which is a business school that I think many of you are familiar with, the University of Pennsylvania, while I was there, I also did my graduate degree in international relations, which was simply a necessity at that time. And I couldn't go back to finish the last class, because I was already on Wall Street in New York. So I sent my mom, who had not even gone to college, finished college. She went and took the Capstone course at the University of Pennsylvania.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
And the professor said to me, you know, you're taking a risk now. This is your final course, and you're not even here. And I said, my mom's pretty good. And she took the course. I read her notes, and I took the eight-hour exam and got my master's degree.
That's believable.
All things are possible with the right mom. So at any rate, so my business career has been in finances and basically handling people's assets. And it allowed me to move to Hingham by 25. I have a good life here. A few years after I came here, Tom Aldano asked me to join the Capital Committee, which would be normal for somebody with a finance background. And then I was chair of it. But then, the year that I was chair is also the year I finally had a baby close to age 40. And then my husband got cancer the next year. So that kind of ended my involvement on city boards at that time. But I did have my Navy hobby, the US Navy, which I, it was my fun thing outside of work. And I loved it. And I had it for 30 years. And they made me a chief right away. And they asked me to become an officer, and I said, no, I don't want that. We have plenty of those in my family. I like being rank and file. And as you might all know, being a Navy chief means taking care of people. And whether it was, whether it was the Navy Intelligence, or whether or not it was the Seabees, the Construction Battalion Seabees, or whatever kind of a company I was the command chief of, it was fun, and I really enjoyed it. And it, in a sense, it's a little bit like this particular appointment in that whoever is, I believe, if I have it correct, who is on the board is really there to help represent the tenants, the seniors and the disabled that may be in the Hingham Housing Authority. So that Navy experience, that hands-on, taking care of the troops, is who I really am. And that's what I enjoy most. And of course, I've had many, as you've seen from the Talent Bank application, I've had the opportunity to be on various boards and chair of various activities over the years. And my child has grown now. I've been a widow for 18 years. It's time for me to put my oar back in the water, do something again in the town. I attended the October meeting at the Hingham Housing Authority and saw that there were certainly many issues to be resolved and many things to be worked on. And I hope I can lend my talent to that. And I think maybe that international relations training and diplomacy may come into play here as well. Perhaps it can be useful. And I think whoever becomes your representative, your appointment, there are a number of courses to take. Take them fairly soon, the ethics appointment, the ethics course, the other courses, the online and the in-class. And to be there, and to be there for all of the meetings, and to help the board fulfill whatever it feels its plans are and its objectives are. Certainly in Hingham, with a quarter of our population over 60, and of course, many are in their own homes, but there's going to be an increasing need going forward for housing, for seniors and for disabled. And I think whatever the Housing Authority is, it's going to have to look at that big picture of where do we go from here? We only have X number of apartments at Lincoln, and that's a beautifully managed property. And then we have 92 apartments at Thaxter Street. And that barely sounds like sufficient for what's coming down the pike in the next decade or two. So I think these to be some strong, productive, future-oriented thinking to serve the needs of the town. And I understand whoever has this appointment will then have to run for office this spring, if I have that correct. I'm not sure if I do. But perhaps it's just you do this appointment, and then it ends the spring after the elections.
My understanding, Michelle, jump in here. This appointment would be through 2022.
Oh.
Which is the end of the unexpired term.
Oh, so this is filling someone's term.
Yeah, by my manner of speaking, yeah.
So one does not need to run for election right away, then?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of a relief to know. So I hope I've been able to provide you a brief thumbnail description of who I am. And if I may ask her any questions, I'll be happy to.
Well, thank you so much. I found that very informative. Mr. Keys?
We met 30 years ago when I was on recreation. You were just getting out of college, I think we met.
Yeah, yes. Wow. Thank you, thank you for the compliment. I'd been out quite well by that point, but thank you.
I was gonna ask you what your interest was in housing, and you explained it beautifully. So I'm not gonna ask any more questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Buer?
I really enjoyed speaking with you at the last Housing Authority meeting, and I really appreciate that you're willing to jump in and help us out. I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Lori, thank you for coming in. I appreciate, I didn't know some of your background, so thank you very much. I'm asking everybody the same four questions. So what skills do you bring to the Housing Authority to move us forward to be a better board?
First, I understand there's a lot of uncalm waters at this moment, and hopefully I can help calm the waters. That's the first thing, I believe. Secondly, my background is finance. And going forward, with the responsibilities that are going to be thrust on the Housing Authority, having a good financial background might be helpful. Thirdly, I already explained that I've been hands-on in my own personal life with seniors. And I am a senior now. And it's delightful, and I enjoy working with them, and I enjoy representing them. Fourthly, in this particular circumstance, the tenants at Thaxter Street also need another buddy, someone to help maybe get, help them build their own tenants' association, to use their talents, because there's many talented people there. There's professionals there, there's people who aren't professionals but have great talents. It'd be nice to let them shine. So I think those are the four areas I think I could help.
What have you done to prepare for tonight's interview?
I went online and read some of the things from the Department of Housing and Community Development, some of the requirements, some of the background of this particular Housing Authority. And I've asked other parties what, because I could not ask you, the four of you or the five of you, what would be the requirements going forward and what are the needs, and things like that. Hence, I'm aware that there's courses I need to take and things like that.
I think you just answered the next couple of questions. Will you commit to attend all the training required?
Yes, I think there's at least five courses that I should get done, at least. And anybody who is on the board should do them as quickly as they can to bring themselves up to speed.
Have you attended Housing Authority meetings? You already answered that one also.
The tenants asked me to go to the one in October, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I do have to say that I won't be here for November. If I were to be appointed, I will miss the November meeting. So, but thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions?
Yeah, this is a little bit fair, because I haven't asked the same one to anybody else. You have a pretty good knowledge of what we're doing. Do you have any comments on the mixture of types, elderly, handicapped, how's this?
In terms of housing, current housing?
How about what we might pursue in the future, in terms of people served and in terms of track of development? It's a little fair, because I haven't asked other people the same thing. But if you've been making observations on your own, it might be good to hear.
You have, sometimes two different populations, and sometimes they merge. You can have adults with disabilities that there are very few options for them as to where they can live. And the few options that are out there are extremely expensive. There's one small house for four disabled adults just a few blocks from my house in here in Hingham, that no one really speaks about. But the families of those four individuals bought that house so that four people could live there and have a case manager. Well, that's a very unusual and rare occurrence. You are going to have, as we all know, more adults with disabilities that need to be housed. At the same time, we have seniors, more and more of them, over 65, with limited financial resources, for whatever reasons, who also need to be cared for. And no one likes to see their residents leave their town if they don't, if they don't want to, if something can be done. So you're looking at assisting adult disabled people who have different needs from seniors who are thoroughly competent but simply need a financial help. So you've got two different populations. Sometimes you have disabled people that are over 65, then you have a merging of those two needs. So the broader answer is that plans have to start to begin to come to be, to find some kind of additional housing for both of these groups. And I'm not sure right now, with X number of units at Lincoln and Y number of units at Thaxter, if Hingham has enough units for both your disabled and your senior population.
So you're very worthy. That's it. So you're very worthy, that's it, of the needs.
I don't know if I answered your question correctly, but that's what I see out there, yeah.
Because we talk about some joint efforts to broaden the population served. It's very complicated.
It is.
I think you're open to looking at those possibilities. Thanks.
You're welcome.
First of all, thank you for sharing what is a very powerful personal story. I appreciate that candor. And it certainly is helpful in understanding the personal experiences you potentially bring to this role. I'm interested in the board experience that you've had, and particularly boards that may have faced challenges or dysfunction, and how you, as a member of the board, have worked to repair and move boards forward.
Well, when I was on the Town of Hingham Capital Committee, that ran like a normal Hingham civic board. A great deal of respect between the people. And whatever people's personal thoughts were, they worked towards unified goals. And it was a pretty easily understandable job, figure out what needs to be paid for, put it in priority, and get it paid. And so that was, and also, you had a wonderful direction from the top, from your moderators. And that is the way that board ran, and to my knowledge, the way boards in Hingham almost always run. I had a board in Boston, a trust in Boston, a real estate trust, same for 11 years, same, did it the same way. And 11 years is a long time to do it the same way. And there, the rule was make lots of money and take care of a lot of things. And we did that. I have not, currently, I am the secretary, executive secretary of a civic board, the Seabees, the name of New England, for the last four years. And my job was to clean up all their records and get them to come to their reunions. And we've got huge numbers coming, and just bill court de sprit, as we call it in the military. And I, going, looking forward, I can see uncalmed waters in the future. And so I'm going to be stepping down from that after I finish my term, because I'd like to be where I can be productively helping instead of fighting. So if I answered your question.
Yep, yep, thank you.
As you think about the, what would be some of the priorities that you would hope that the Housing Authority could accomplish over the next few years?
Short term. There are tenants, well, the Housing Authority has different functions, but one of them is Thaxter Street. Right now, the Housing Authority really does not do a lot at Lincoln. Lincoln pretty much takes care of itself, its board of directors and its management company. It's probably important to generate a thriving tenants association that has goodwill and does good things, and works with its executive director, and it's board to do whatever good things the tenants would like. That's probably a very short-term, easy, inexpensive thing to get going on, which requires, all requires is goodwill and people. And those two things go together. So longer term, whatever the board has currently in front of it, that I certainly would not know at this time. But I expect it has something to do with getting programs, getting grants, and looking at the long-term question of how are we going to generate sufficient housing.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Taylor, briefly, thank you very much for coming in and stepping forward. You mentioned you were contacted by the tenants, did?
I know a lot, I know 20 or 30 people that live there. And they've come from all walks of life. And just because I've lived in Hingham a long time, and they just ended up living there. And I've known them over time. And so I was away in September, but when I came back at the end of September, I got a couple of phone calls and said, would you please come to a meeting? And I said, what for? And they said, we'd like you to come. And oh, by the way, there's an opening. So I, okay. And I wrote eight pages of notes and thought, holy moly. So that's how it came to be.
Well, thank you so much. Very much appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
What an amazing lineup of people, I have to say. I mean, I would love to work with any of the four of them.
I'd echo that sentiment. It's always interesting and always difficult to make a choice with respect to our fellow residents for positions of this nature. If memory serves, I've done this once before. So I'd be inclined to kind of just sit back and get a pulse as to what the reaction of the collective group was to the people that we heard tonight before commenting.
Okay, I thought that they were all very impressive. I was originally, I do think it's important to have the tenant representation, but I also feel like Sharon Jordan's experience as an employee was very strong. She also has legal experience and financial experience, both of which I thought were very important. As I said, I think all four of them are incredibly impressive, and I would love to work with any of them. But right now, I would be leaning towards her.
Anyone else?
Well?
I'm gonna go with the tenant. I think we're obligated to have a tenant on the board. So how'd it go, James? Good, James?
I'll go next.
Yeah, okay.
I think all four of them would do very well. I think Elizabeth James will have a chance again when the tenant, because I think Karen, excuse me, brought up a good point. We could have too many, overburden of wealth, have too many tenants without the broad breadth of experience that we really do need. And I think Greg is overqualified. I had no idea. I would see him as the better fit on Lincoln School or the Housing Trust. My thought, I'd like to work with any of them. We've worked with Beth for a long time. She's certainly left her mark on the Housing Authority and its tenants. I would be happy with either Laurie or Sharon. In either, if it was, if whichever way the board goes, I would like either Laurie, and I'll put Laurie number one for no reason, and then Sharon number two. But I could go with Sharon one and Laurie two, either one.
Really not a vote, is it?
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Well, we're just gonna, we're chewing, well, we're chewing on it a little bit, which is okay. Jim?
I think Troy's great, because I've known him for a long time, and he was quite multi-talented. I think I agree with her. I would hope that Beth gets on in that role in the future, because she's a great resource. And I was astonished by Laurie Taylor. I couldn't hear everything, but all I could hear was pretty impressive, and the resume is, and Sharon has a lot to offer. So I'm sort of dodging it, because there's too, almost too many good candidates. I think my first vote was probably for Greg, but I could see a lot of possibilities.
My colleagues.
Well, I think, as I sort of previewed for you, I feel like one of the skillsets that may be missing around the table is a legal skillset. And I share, first of all, I share our collective, I think, agreement that we've got four very outstanding candidates. And, you know, for those of you, you know, you probably know, we go through this Talent Bank application usually every spring. And it's just amazing to me, the folks that are willing to volunteer for the town. And tonight is no exception to that sort of stand-out and stand-up behavior of Hingham volunteers. But, you know, I think that, I think that it's important from an analytical standpoint. I know that there are regulatory and legal issues that the board will confront, both short-term and long-term. And while an individual who volunteers for the town doesn't serve on the board in a legal capacity, I think they certainly bring that, that lens to the discussion and that perspective to the discussion. So, you know, like Jim, you know, I've known Greg O'Meara for a long time. I've worked with him. And, you know, I think for me, the interconnectedness of Hingham boards, I think frankly, is going to be important to the success, not only of the Housing Authority, but all affordable housing in Hingham. And so in that way, I think, you know, I was between Greg and Sharon, and I just, I know Greg's connections, so I'm probably leaning in that direction as well.
I would just echo our collective sentiment that we are so fortunate. And, you know, I hope, you know, we have a lot of people in the audience, people watching at home. You know, when, when you have people who come and they're willing to give of their time and their talent, and you just listen to people's life story and their experience, I always think it's a really good Hingham night, when we have such a wealth of talent. And I don't know if other communities are as fortunate, but, you know, when I, just conversing with all these people, I'm so proud of the community that I live in, and just so appreciative of everybody who's stepping forward. With respect to this particular opening, you know, if I were to rank it, I'd say we would want some legal skills, and then secondly, some financial skills, because I can see how both are important. I think I would be inclined, while every candidate brings some unique things, would bring unique skills to enhance the Housing Authority, I'd be inclined to support Greg O'Meara. I think some of the community center experience that he's had for what looked to me to be like 30 years, I just feel like there's a connection here with some of the Housing Authority work that could, could come in, could be very helpful, as just well as the fact that he's been practicing here in town locally. And when I think about things like, you know, getting people to do work, repair, a lot of the work that, you know, where you folks might engage people outside within the community, my guess is Greg O'Meara's probably touched, touched them or knows of them in some fashion. And I think some of those relationships could be helpful.
I, I'm looking at who joins you as someone that can work with you in a collegial way? I think that's important. I think balance on a board is very important. I also note that two of the individuals who formerly sat with you and left the board for reasons that are their own, were both lawyers.
Any second.
So, I mean, I, I understand that there's a vacancy, but I also feel that there's a need for somebody with some legal training and background. Not that you have to have a lawyer on every board, but I think with the Housing Authority, it sure would help. And I think, I think Greg O'Meara's a guy that you can get along with, to be candid with you. I've known him for a very long time. I've watched him when he thinks nobody's looking. And he's a real gentleman. And with his background that I didn't know about until he was up here on the podium tonight, I think that that could be very helpful to the Housing Authority and, you know, smooth the waters, so to speak. So that's kind of where I am. I'm glad to see that you were inclined to recognize that as well, Jim. So with that, I guess I'd take, I'll entertain a motion for the position. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion, just looking for my vote list, to appoint Greg O'Meara to the Hingham Housing Authority, to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2022.
Do we have three exact votes down here? And we haven't, maybe, maybe, you know, we haven't had exact votes.
I'm sorry?
We haven't had exact votes down here. We said, heard, maybe we'll have this one or that one, you know? I mean, we haven't had exact votes yet.
I think that's what we're doing right now. There's a motion on the floor.
I mean, it hasn't come up yet, so we haven't had a motion.
Right. So we just need a second.
Jim seconded it.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of Greg O'Meara?
Aye.
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 Just to remind you, as the chairman of the statute, vote called vote.
Vote called vote, going from right to left.
Aye.
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 No.
No. I'll go with a no.
Aye.
Aye, yeah. All right. Welcome, Mr. O'Meara to the Housing Authority.
So I could, I'll talk to you, I could talk to you offline.
Green chair.
Yes, the mysterious green chair.
That Michelle did. It's fantastic, because I'm gonna get it. Because who knows? I don't think the musical chairs are gonna stop. Good, thank you.
Tom, would you just ask the residents that we?
Some of them may have left, but.
All right, well, those that haven't, just, we'd invite them to join us.
I don't know if everybody was outside, I just.
Want to ask them to come in as I be saying?
Yeah, would you?
Thank you for coming.
Again, I'd really like to apologize for having.
No, I knew you had family stuff.
Childcare situation.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
This was great.
Oh, good.
Nice job on that PowerPoint.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, that actually made sense.
All the candidates.
Okay.
Very good. All right. So we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the reserve fund transfer request for demolition of 58 Main Street. And just by way of background, just join us at the table, please, Mr. Clancy and Town Council, John Cofflin. Welcome, gentlemen, both.
Thank you.
Mr. Clancy, rather than stumble through it, I'll ask you to just update us and refresh the public's recollection of where we left this matter when we last met.
The last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I came here to ask for a transfer of funds to demolish the home and barn at 58 Main Street. The board listened to the owner, Mr. Pitts, listened to myself, listened to Town Council, listened to the police chief, and one of the deputy fire chiefs. In our opinion, the building is unsafe. The owner does not think it's unsafe. So as it was, the board allowed him to give, till tonight's meeting, to give us some more information on, on the property. So what I'm gonna do is read a memo I gave to the Chairman Healy today, dated October 30. The Building Department sent Mr. Pitts a dated letter on October 19, by first-class mail, certified mail, and by constable, to both the Weymouth and Norwell address, explaining the information that was required for tonight's meeting. The constable reported that the owner at 9J Road, Norwell, stated that Mr. Pitts does not live here. On October 29, 2018, at approximately 4:00 p.m., Mr. Pitts came to the Building Department, asked to speak to me. I had the electrical inspector in my office. I did not have the time to talk to Mr. Pitts at that time. However, he did deliver some information to the Building Department, and additional information, which was yesterday. Additional information was sent by email at 11:11 p.m. As of 4:00 today, all the unregistered motor vehicles have been removed from the property. I did do an inspection at 12:00 this afternoon. One was still there. However, the electrical inspector went by at 4:00 and found that the truck was removed. Now we'll get down to the accessory structure barn. We received a proposal that's in your packet here, received it to demolish and reconstruct, demolish and reconstruct the barn from Robert Clogston. However, it is not a contract under the Home Improvement Contract law. I spoke with Mr. Clogston yesterday and asked him to come to the Building Department, so I could provide him a copy of the letter I sent to Mr. Pitts. He did not come to the Building Department. If you look at Mr. Clogston's, I guess it's a proposal, it says, proposed work for John Pitts, 58 Main Street, rear building will include a formally controlled demolition prior to the reconstruction. Work to begin Work to begin immediately after issuance of a permit. We explained in the letter that we would need a start and end date. We did not get that in this. The new construction will be up to code and performed according to engineering. We did not receive a plan or an engineer's report on what he plans on doing with that structure. The engineering is yet to be determined. Work will be performed on a cost-plus basis, seventy-five dollars per man-hour plus materials. There is a couple of signatures here. If you go to the next page, Mr. Clogston is a licensed contractor in good standings. He's also a home improvement contractor and is registered. So, when you were registered as a home improvement contractor, in the next packet, you were supposed to provide with a contract, fourteen items that must be included in any contract between a homeowner and a registered homeowner, a registered home improvement contractor for home improvement work. That proposal has eight different requirements missing from it. So, I'm not an attorney. I don't expect, say I'm an attorney. Town Council is here. He has taken a look at it. Other than that, we did talk with the original letter to Mr. Pitts that he was going to tear that down, and a different contractor was going to take care of the entire project. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that section, or I can go to the next.
Why don't you proceed?
Okay.
Please.
We're going to go to the home now, house. On October twenty-ninth, we received a contract. It was not from email. It, we did receive the Bickford Woodworking contract. It was from an email address that I don't know who it was. So, I don't think it came from Mr. Bickford. Dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. The contract is detailed with a start date upon the issuance of a building permit and a completion date on or before six months after the building permit is issued for phase one through five. Phase six is to be completed no later than eighteen month, excuse me, eight months after the interior permit is issued. Only one page of the contract is signed and dated. There are three pages to it. There were signatures, spaces for signatures and dates on the other two pages. In the, a letter sent to Mr. Pitts back on the previous October nineteenth, we asked for an engineer's report and an engineer's plan. Mr. Pitts did drop off an engineer's plan from McKinnon and Associates, but there was not an engineer's report to go with it. So, other than that, that's where we're at right now.
And is the, is the report a narrative of the plan? Is that what it was?
Correct, how it's going to be done. To date, the Building Department has issued almost twelve hundred building permits. That does not include the almost eight, five hundred apartments under construction. We request the information from hundreds of people. If you give us the information, we will give you a permit. It's simple, it's as simple as that. That's all we need. We need the required information, we'll give you a permit.
As a point of clarity, it indicates that, your, your memo indicates that the constable sought to serve Mr. Pitts with some information at nineteen J Road in Norwell and reported back that Mr. Pitts does not in fact live there?
That's what the woman said at the door. However, she said that she would give it to him. Last Selectmen's meeting, the chairman asked Mr. Pitts where he was living, and he came over to council and wrote down his address, and that was the address.
Okay. And was it the October nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, letter that was served upon him at that address, sir?
Yes.
As well as by email and the address in Weymouth.
And the address in Weymouth?
Yes. Not Weymouth.
Questions for my colleagues?
So, I'm just going to read a couple of things here that I just want to draw my colleagues' attention to because we got all this information, you know, we've all gotten this information in a short period of time. I'm just looking at the quote from Bickford Woodworking and, on the second page, and I'm just, phase six, the language that Mr. Bickford had put in the letter with respect to phase six interior finish, I just see some handwritten notes that I'm going to call your attention to. Payable within ninety days of invoice, subject to owner discretion and approval of architectural designs. And then down below, under contract price, set additions and subtractions are subsequent to owner's approval in writing within thirty days. So, I mean, I, I'm just kind of looking at some of this, and the way I'm inferring some of that is that this is still subject to the owner's discretion and.
Well, the copy I have is only initial by Mr. Pitts. Is that the same copy you have?
Right. I don't, I don't see that that was initial by Mr. Bickford, so I'm, you know, I, I think at some point, I don't know if you want to bring people up for questions, but that's a little confusing. I, I would just wonder, is, does Mr., is Mr. Clogston, this is the quote from Mr. Clogston, is he in the audience?
No, he's not here at the same time, but.
Okay.
All right. So, Mike and John, just a, a couple of things. And while I was not present in the room two weeks ago due to a family obligation, I did watch the meeting and watch the tape. So, just a, a couple of questions. I actually attended the Historic Districts Commission meeting on August sixteenth, and at that time, there was a big push for a thirty-day extension, and the Historic Districts Commission chose instead to approve the request of the town. And, but during that time, the Chair of the Historic Districts Commission encouraged the property owner to work collaboratively with the town to try to save the house. So, my, my question to both of you is, between August sixteenth and October sixteenth, which was sixty-one days, did anything happen at that property?
I'm just going to speak. Mr. Pitts did install a fence.
Okay.
That was required, and he did remove the unregistered vehicles today.
Okay, so, 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 in that sixty-one days, a fence was installed, which addressed some of the security concerns, and, okay. And John, just for my clarity again, because I know that this has been a long process, should the town, should the board vote to take this action tonight? My understanding is that it is not requiring Mr. Clancy to engage in demolition. It just advances the opportunity for him to do that.
Right. Just to be clear, what the board is being asked to do is, is to approve an appropriation.
Right.
It's not mandating demolition.
Right.
It's not directing the building inspector to do anything. It gives him the tools to do that job if he, in his discretion, chooses to do that.
Yep. And could you please describe for me, under what circumstances, because I know the town has gone through a, a survey process and has gotten a lot of input, what, what sort of activity on the site would trigger that process having to start over again?
So, right now, the, the town is going through the full process into chapter one forty-three. It's done the survey report, it's served all the legal notices. So, at this point, the town is in the position of going forward with the demolition if the building inspector makes that decision. If there's significant amount of work done at the property to bring it up to code or to do some demolition of some structures or some repair, at some point, you're going to have to go out and do a survey again of the property because you have to show that it's an unsafe structure or that it's a fire hazard.
And, and do you have a sense, John, of, of the degree of work at which it would cross over that threshold? In, in other words, like, if the barn was demolished, would?
Well, the barn, yeah, the barn's one structure, so the house, the house would still, and, and I think the important piece of this is the fire department's testimony, because under the statute, if it's a fire hazard, it's per se deemed to be an unsafe structure.
I see.
So, you'd have to do something to remove the, the risk of fire. You know, the fence helps, but you'd have to have some significant work there.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no, you know, there's no precise dollar amount or.
Right.
You know, the statute isn't just, it just doesn't say, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned that there's no engineering report because that, although there's an engineering plan, number five of the October nineteen letter indicates a detailed plan that outlines, an engineer's report with a detailed plan that outlines how the structure house will be secured and supported. That's pretty material to my consideration of this issue, the fact that we, while we have the plan, we don't have the report, right? I have to say, so, I was downtown today when the last car left at four o'clock, so I appreciate that. But I don't appreciate the fact that when we ask for an address, there apparently still seems to be some, some confusion over where we can legally serve Mr. Pitts, and that just doesn't give me a, a great feeling on our, our relationship and our ability to communicate with him going forward. You know, Mr. Clancy, as you point out, I think that the demolition, the contract for the demolition of the barn, to me, again, does not adhere to the requirements that were outlined in the October thirty letter. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just sort of troubled as to where we've ended up after two additional weeks. You know, I realize there was a lot to do, but I'm just not sure this meets the standard that I had anticipated.
Is the plan stamped?
Excuse me?
Is the plan stamped?
Yes, it is.
Is it, what's its dated? What's, what's it dated?
October twenty-ninth.
Have you seen it before?
I, I have not seen that plan before, nor.
Questions from the public?
I have no idea what you guys talked. Can you explain, like, the three plans? It wasn't clear without some information, what plans, what, were three plans presented? Did Peter Bigford submit one? Can you just explain that a little better? Because it's not, I don't, it's not clear to me, like, I don't think people either.
It's my understanding that in a letter to Mr. Pitts dated October nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, which we attempted to serve upon him at the address that he gave us in Norwell, he was to present, to the extent that he wanted to save the structure, a, a plan with a report accompanying it in addition to any contract. That did not occur. Is that right, Mr. Clancy?
That's correct. We did receive the plan. We did not receive the engineer's report to go with the plan.
And, and is it customary to receive the report with a plan in, in a circumstance of this nature?
On this, yes.
And the, the, the contract with respect to the barn, if you will, in no way, shape, or manner meets the basic requirements of a contract required for a project of this nature. And then with respect to the house, there are additions, additional notations to the contract which are signed by one party, and as I understand it and interpret it, leave it to the discretion of the homeowner as to what the payment is to be made. Is that your conclusion as well?
That's my conclusion.
All right. So, I think.
Did he present anything that's not clear?
Yes, he did. He did.
What was that for?
It, it was a three-page document, first page signed. I, I imagine the typed portion of it was written or drafted by Mr. Bickford. There were some handwritten notations, addendums, edits that were initial by the homeowner.
Was that about the barn and the house? Was it a contract?
It appears to be speaking to the house.
But that wasn't complete either?
Portions of it are unexecuted. It's ambiguous and unclear. Yes, Richard?
Can we speak?
Absolutely. Just go to the podium, identify yourself by name and address.
Richard Young, fifty-eight, fifty-eight, forty-eight Main Street. I think that, I think it's important just to keep John's feet, or the owner's feet to the fire. I mean, I don't think we're, again, it's not going to be knocked down tomorrow, but really, we're really appreciative as being neighbors that things are moving as slowly as they are, but at least they're moving in the right direction. Again, we're not, I don't think there's a vote or a decision to be made to knock it down. It's just to keep moving to, you know, and pushing John forward to do stuff. So, maybe he just needs a nudge and, you know, things will take care of themselves, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Deborah Redmond. I'm from, it's seventy-eighth Thistle Patchway. I'm newly back to Hingham, and, but I have actually written to members of this committee previously about the state of the building. And I am actually Janet's sister, so my parents lived there. And it's really important to me that we actually support the Building Department and that we support all of our town committees and, and the people that are serving the town. I, I'm really concerned about it as a continued safety issue, and I think it's important to actually support the appropriation so that things can stay on track. I mean, it sounds like the documents that have been created are really incomplete. That letter was really specific. It couldn't have been any clearer about what needed to be done in what timeframe. So, I just think we should move forward with being able to actually support our employees.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Pitts? He's so kind as.
I'm John Pitts. I'm the owner of the house.
Identify yourself by name and address, please.
John Pitts. My property is at fifty-eight Main Street, and that's the property we're discussing this evening. As far as where you asked me last week, the best place to reach me or serve some papers, I gave you the address. I do not live there. I stay there often. I'm up in Vermont most of the time. That is the best place to get me. When I'm down, I'm usually around, and I stop there. That is the best location to serve any papers.
Where's the address that you vote from?
Would be Vermont, if, if anywhere. I'm not registered. I'm up, up in Vermont. If I was going to vote, it would be in Vermont. That's where my residence.
Is there anything else you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, I was just saying, I've had a, a lot of things that we had to get done. I've been trying for a couple of weeks to get the vehicles moved, and I expressed the letter you said, I believe it was the twenty-ninth or the nineteenth, said it had to be out before the Selectmen's meeting, and it was. All I know is there's a bunch of things that you wanted. We're doing the very best we can. Peter wrote up the contract, and I think the first page, as we understood it when we went over, he says that covers everything, and I think there was a summary on the first page. And, you know, even last week, I found a letter that had been forwarded to me. Someone sent it to my phone, and Mr. Clancy stated that he had never received any engineer report. And I, I have a, a letter here from him saying he received an engineer's report, and that was January tenth of two thousand seventeen. And the engineer that worked on that, he just finished it. He's been working on it for, I don't know, probably. for, I don't know, probably two weeks. He was down there last week taking measurements, and they went through the house. He went through the barn, and he expressed, um, that the barn should be saved. When I went to the meeting, um, when they were looking for permission to, from the Historic Society or Commission, to take the building down, I wanted to take the barn down. At that time, when I took it down originally, it was an old structure there in the backyard, it's on the plot plan here, and I had the permit in hand before we constructed the new I would like the same thing, if we were gonna do it, I, now the contractor and the engineer say the barn is better than the code, it's twelve-inch on center, the studs is two-by-six, um, he did make a recommendation, maybe, um, bringing it up, I guess the new code requires two-by-ten roof rafters, which is not a big thing. Uh, the barn was half-finished, I received a letter from the Historic Commission saying you couldn't put a top on it, and that's when things got wet and everything kinda fell apart at that time. My intent is to move forward and try to bring it to a conclusion, make it a nice house, um, make the barn, uh, fit in, it'll be historically correct. Peter said he was too busy doing the house, putting his, um, efforts into, uh, putting the contract together, and he asked me to speak to some people I know, and that he would oversee them, so Peter would be ultimately watching it, making sure, I mean, the guy's a, he's got his, uh, construction supervisor's license, um, his home improvement license, whatever, he's got all the certificates and registrations he needs, but Peter's the guy that I trust when it comes to historic correctness, and I would be having him follow this guy, making sure everything conforms to, um, what we're doing. And the reason he couldn't put a start and finish date, he didn't know when the permit would be issued, I mean, if the permit was issued a week before the 30th, how can we do it? Your letter was requiring it to be done by the 30th of November. Um, if we knew when we got the permit, then we could have a definite timeframe as to when it could be finished.
Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Pitts, are you suggesting now that you wanna save the barn?
Yes.
Then why the heck did you give us a, a quote to demolish it? That was yesterday. I mean, I...
Because, if you read it, it says a controlled, which means you take down the pieces, they only wanna take down the front. A controlled demolition is not a, a total demolition, it's a controlled, where you take a portion of the building down, the only part that is in danger is the front. So that is a controlled demolition, and the rest would be reframing it, the front, and that's why it said, yeah, controlled, it didn't say a total demolition.
Is that...
Anything else?
No. So that's not what we asked for, right? We didn't ask for, Mike, we didn't, we asked for, "You must provide the town with a signed, detailed contract between you and a licensed demolition or building contractor to demolish the barn located on the property. The demolition of the barn must be commenced immediately and must be completed no later than November 30, 2018. You must provide a copy of, of the contract to the town by October 29th, 2018, so the Board of Selectmen can review it prior to our October 30 meeting." There was no choi, like, the house, there was a, there were some choices, the barn...
There was no choice.
There was no choice.
Can I speak again?
You may.
Uh...
Identify yourself by name and address where you vote from.
Sure, I'm John Pitts. I own the house in question, Fifty-Eight Main Street, and the reason...
What's the address that you vote from?
Um, my, I actually have a place up in Vermont, and I...
And what is it? What's the address that you vote from?
Uh, it's up in Burlington, Vermont, on Jersey...
Street.
And I...
Street.
Have moved out of there, and, but all I know is...
Is there anything else you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, what I'd like to say is the fact that when I went to get, um, uh, permission to save the house with the Historic Commission at the September, or August meeting, I said I wanted to take the barn down and, and have a, a new one built. Now, engineers have looked at it, they say there's nothing wrong with it, the engineer was concentrating on that, um, Peter's gone through it, the barn, they say, is structurally sound, the front would do a controlled demolition. A lot of money went into that barn, and a lot of utility work, a lot of things have gone into it to get it to that point. And, um, like I said, I'm trying to move forward, we're trying to make things right, and, um, and that's all you can do. I was given a lot of things to get done within two weeks, and I think we've done pretty well. Peter worked hard, I just got the contract from him, I think it was Sunday, I believe, and, um, you know, we were, been straight out, he's been getting pricing, and, um, and we're trying to save the place, we're trying to bring it back, and it's historically correct to have the barn. When that house was built, people didn't have garages for cars, they had a barn for their horses and their animals, and, um, we're trying to make it historically correct, and that's part of the property, and that's what it is.
Can I ask one?
Certainly.
Can I ask you one more question, Mr. Pitts?
Sure.
Um, I'm a little bit concerned, you have a contract with Mr. Bickford here, um, but you're indicating that someone else will do the work.
No, on, on the main house, Peter's doing all the work, but the barn, he doesn't have the time. He said...
Okay.
He's gonna be concentrating on the house, but he will oversee the barn, he'll go out and watch his men work, even though the, the other person would take out the permits, he'll just be my set of eyes on that project.
And have you paid any sort of deposit to Mr. Bickford at this point, or you're waiting for our action tonight?
Uh, I have a deposit, Mr. Bickford knows me, we've worked together before, all he's gotta do is ask for it, it's not a problem, I've never had money issues ever. I've had him do work for me, he's done, he's done a lot of work for me on the house in the past, and he was gonna do it when I ever did restoration work, and, um, and I've done work for him, and we've never had a, a money issue.
Are there any questions you may have, Mr. Clancy, before Mr. Pitts takes a seat?
Uh, yes.
What are they?
It's for Mr. Bickford.
Well, we can't compel Mr. Bickford to speak if he chooses not to, and I don't wanna inject him into this discussion needlessly, if we can avoid that.
Mr. Pitts?
Sure.
Can you tell me the last...
Any question for me?
Only if you wish to answer it, sir.
Sure.
Why don't you come on up?
Peter Bickford, Sixty-Five Luzell Street.
How are you?
Hi.
Hi, Peter.
I'll answer any question you want.
Sure, Peter, uh, Mr. Pitts said that you worked for him in the past...
Yes.
On that ho, home. Can you tell me the last time you worked at that home?
Uh, can't remember the date, but it was probably early eighties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford.
Can I, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Are you familiar with the, the insertions in the contract that Mr. Pitts made about his discretion to pay and...
Yeah, he, he, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I believe that, I, I signed all pages of that contract, I believe, it's, no?
No.
The pages two and three of, of the copy we have do not have yours initials on the bottom.
I apologize for that, but...
Yeah, and the insert, the, yeah, and the insertions don't have your initials either, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is it, like, priced out, like, is there a con... I'm sorry.
Uh, Richard Young, Forty-Eight Main Street, just curious if on the contract, that there's, like, no one's talking about price, or is, is John, or the owner, um, like, obligated to, um, certain payments, or like, most people would be entering, entering into a contract with the contractor, uh, for, you know, X amount of money?
There, there were specifics within the contract, but I, I'm not sure it's appropriate actually to get to that point in the discussion. I'd like to just get a sense from the board as to, uh, the direction it intends to take, and that may obviate the need to go into that line of questioning. You know, at, at some risk of incurring the unhappiness of the Historic Districts Commission, the Building Department, the Hingham Police Department, and the Hingham Fire Department, two weeks ago, um, the board took a step back from a decision that it was asked to make relative to this piece of property, which has basically been left in a deteriorated condition for over three decades. We had a conversation with the owner, who, when asked to provide the address upon which he could be, uh, provided with legal notice, gave us one. Today we learn that that is not his legal address, he says he lives in Vermont, um, but yet has declined to provide that information upon request as well. There was a letter provided to him, um, with the addresses we had available, as well as the email, which asked for certain information that frankly should have been provided, but was not. And tonight, as I sit here, listening to this gentleman, I am not receiving an explanation as to why it was not provided that is satisfactory to me. I am persuaded that the only way that the request of the Building Department, um, for compliance with its October 19th, 2018 conditions are, are gonna ever materialize, if there's any chance at all, is for us to support the reserve fund transfer request. I think that, absent that pressure, we're gonna be, continue to be greeted with, frankly, proffered reasons that are very unpersuasive. And I think Mr. Clancy has shown a great deal of restraint and patience in this matter. I think that the proximity of the houses on either side of these structures, as well as the Old Derby Academy Museum, which the town has spent over a million dollars of public money to restore, is, is being placed at risk needlessly. Um, if, if Mr. Pitts is truly sincere in his desire to, to do what he claims he is, uh, he will promptly cure the defects in the paperwork that he presented. We received a, a single piece of paper that in no way resembles a contract with respect to the barn. Um, the contract with respect to the house between Mr. Bickford, uh, is incomplete, and it vests way too much discretion, uh, with respect to payment and control of the project. Uh, I was comfortable with Mr. Bickford having a substantive role in it, I don't see that in the paperwork, unfortunately. Um, I thank Mr. Bickford for his efforts coming forward. If Mr. Pitts is serious about this, um, he will promptly cure this, but otherwise, I'm prepared to act.
You know, um, we spent a long time, a couple of weeks ago, um, running through all this, my hope was that, um, we would get a, a tighter, um, agreement to save this, uh, this piece of our historic legacy. But my concern about public safety, my ongoing concern about public safety, um, the defects in the contract, the fuzziness around the address, I just, it's not giving me, so, so for me to move forward with this, I have gotta be able to trust, um, that it's gonna move forward. So, you know, when you, when you're signing up a contract, the underlying element of the contract is good faith, that everybody's gonna operate in good faith and in a timely fashion. And when I get that feeling of good faith, th, these things wouldn't be troubling me at this point. So, you know, again, I, I think you and I struggled a couple of weeks ago because, um, it's an important part of our, uh, our history, um, but the balancing here is, um, I think, I think being, being certain, um, about being able to provide for our public safety, um, you know, and having given, I think, Mr. Pitts some added time to come back full bore with, you know, again, a, a very tightly, um, drafted agreement, I, I just, it's not before me tonight, so. I, I, I would be inclined to, um, vote for the reserve fund transfer, because as I understand from, uh, counsel, that still gives Mr. Clancy some discretion, um, and then Mr. Clancy, in his professional capacity as our building inspector, you know, may need to act, and you would have that authority, um, with this reserve fund transfer. Is that right, John?
I, uh, you know, the only, the only thing I would add, I, I actually, in, in preparation for this meeting, I went back and watched the August 16th meeting, because the Historic Districts Commission was put in a situation of doing something that just goes so counter to their mission, which was to authorize the, the demolition of a historic property, and, um, you know, eh, I think that, that they, they had safety concerns, obviously we have them too. I was reminded in looking at it that eight building permits have been issued over many years, six certificates of appropriateness, so the town, I think, has made a very good faith effort to, um, provide the ability for the property owner to do something. Um, I think that the Historic Districts Commission expected a solid plan on August 16th, they didn't get it. Um, if I were here, if I had been here two weeks ago, after sixty-one days had elapsed, I would've expected a solid plan, and I don't think what we got tonight was a solid plan either, and frankly, I don't think you can just look at the last two weeks. I think you have to look at the last eighty-whatever days and, and, and many years, uh, many years before that. I, I'd also say that it just, you know, as I've, as I've watched some of the meetings back over, um, I, I keep feeling, and you know, I'm, I'm a football fan, it's football season, you know, the goal line is the goal line, and I feel like every time we're talking about what's gonna happen on the site, the goal line is moving. And I just, I, I can't take that leap of faith. Um, I think the town has committed an extraordinary amount of resources to trying to make this work. Um, I commend all the commissions and boards, the building department, I think we've given every single opportunity, and I, you know, what struck me is that, um, I think that we've been left with very little choice. We really have not been left with a choice. It is an unfortunate choice, um, but I, I don't think we have an alternative, so, like you, I would support the reserve fund transfer request.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move that we transfer from the reserve fund to the community planning expenses account, uh, an amount of forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. Yes, Mr. Pitts?
John Pitts, I'm the owner of Fifty-Eight Main Street.
And what is your voting address, Mr. Pitts?
Uh, my voting address, if I were to vote, would be up in Vermont.
Are you refusing to disclose your voting address, sir?
Uh, yeah, not on, for television, everything else, that's correct. And, um, that forty-four thousand, I don't know if they went out and got the most expensive demolition people, I don't know if they added in the cost of, to buy the machinery or what, but I've got estimates that are a fraction of that. So I think that should be investigated. And as far as, um, where I vote, I don't see the importance of that, however, I told you where I could be reached, as soon as the mail came, that's what the address is, that's where I got it. I was never properly served before, and, and I don't know how I can respond to things if I'm not being served. My tax bill was going to a P.O. box, uh, some of it was, the bills were obviously not going there, um, but everything, some of the tax bills were going there.
You got notice at the last meeting, did you not? You were present at it.
Uh, I got, I was notified, I was never notified by mail or anything else, I bet it was never sent out, but all I know is I get phone calls that told me about it, that's how I...
And you were here, and you're here tonight?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I, this one, I was, I was, I was here two weeks ago, that's how I knew it was tonight. And two weeks ago, I received a call, I think it was that day...
Did you get the letter that was sent to you?
When?
The October 19th, 2018 letter?
Um, no, October 19th, no, I received a phone call that informed me of, um, of it. No, I did not, because I don't know if they've been sending it to the Waymouth address, but it's the wrong address.
Well, I'm asking you for the address that you can receive legal notice, and you're refusing to disclose it, excuse me.
They wrote.
So, unless there's anything further you wanna say...
Well, I'm telling you where my legal address is, and I'm telling you I was not properly notified, and, uh, if that's your big goal, to tear down the house, fine, but...
It's not my goal.
Well, you know, it's...
It's not my goal, Mr. Pitts.
It sure sounds like it.
Nobody in the room wants it going...
Yeah, well...
All right, all right, that's it. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Watson? Yes, Mr. Watson?
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. This is clearly a terribly frustrating process for everybody, and I think there's some degree of self-destructing involved in it. But people point out they have made some progress, they've given you some fractions of documents. Peter Bickford, you know, can be trusted to do the job, and I just hope your patience holds out, and there should be an award for it. But after all these years, you know, you have the money available, but please keep it aside, put it in a nice tin box and--
I trust Mr. Bickford.
Give them a little more time, if you can.
I have no problem with Mr. Bickford, but Mr. Bickford isn't the principal actor in this role. It's John Pitts, and you saw with your own eyes my efforts to get the legal address upon which he could receive notice, and he's refused to disclose it. I don't know what else that I can say.
You won't, yeah.
I think we just need to vote this. Thank you, Mr. Watson. We're gonna vote this.
Anyway, I don't know if I said this before, I just think the building's too good to waste, even though the process has been very discouraging for you. But the fences are there, the trucks are gone. Incremental progress, glacial progress.
I like your glasses half-full approach, Jim. But I'm still, I've still made my motion.
I think we're done, Mr. Pitts. Thank you.
Well, I was just talking, and I was under the impression, the 19th meeting, I did receive the meeting for this evening, that came to the Jay Road. I did receive that. I received it that next day. As I said, that is the best place to send anything, and to appeal box. Up in Vermont, I'm gonna get it, I'm not always there. The best way to send it's to the Alphaline address, and then how to reach me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Nice job. I'm scared to tell backwards.
No choice. None, zero. Keep taking my glasses on and off. Okay, we've got some votes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Team System Local 25 effective July 1, 2016, through July 30, 2017.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Team System Local 25 effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to sign the warrant for the state election to be held on November 6, 2018.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to close Main Street between Elm and North Streets and South Street, between Central and North Streets, and to use the sidewalks and tunnel cap for Christmas in the square on Friday, December 7, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Can I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
Is there any rain date or anything for this that should be made part of the application, or is this the only date? If Christmas in the Square doesn't go forward on that Friday--
I've been down there when it's raining.
Okay. I just, I don't, I just don't wanna have to hustle up and come back.
Do it again.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to sign a contract with Easton Minerals, Inc., to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works CC Salt or Solo Salt, delivered at $47.50 a ton.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to sign a contract with Champion Salt to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works CC Salt, delivered at $51.74 per ton.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to close Town Hall on Friday, November 23, 2018, and Wednesday, November 28, 2018.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Salkman reports. Michelle?
Yes, just wanted to let you know that we submitted our application for the Green Communities Program on Friday. Thank you very much for your support of that program. We expect to hear back about the designation in December.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for that presentation on the housing authority configuration.
I think you should have just played some music.
I thought that was helpful.
I think you should play some music and kinda illustrated it.
I think it highlights why we selected a lawyer, but-- Thomas?
Yes, so I wanted to let you know that due to some discrepancy that we recently had, I'm gonna be altering the one-day liquor license process to request potential rain dates, or a statement that they will be canceled, the event will be canceled in the event it isn't held. So it'll be one or the other for all of them, so that there's no opportunity--
Great idea.
--for confusion going forward.
Thank you.
So that's one thing that'll happen. I also wanted to let the board know that the state very helpfully increased the town's Chapter 90 allocation this year by 20% to a total of $152,702, and that's used for road building. So, again, very helpful. And some sad news I wanted to let you all know in the town, that on November 3, 2018, the town of Hingham's red flag will be flown at half-mast out front for the passing of a former employee, Douglas Rhines, who was a maintenance supervisor for the town of Hingham for many years. He served his country proudly, also in the U.S. Navy during the Korean conflict, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
I also wanted to thank Michelle for her presentation on the housing authority. It's a really important, it's a very important appointment, but it was also very important to understand the parameters around the appointment, and I think it helped us sort through the very fine candidates we had before us tonight. So, Michelle, I know it was a lot of hard work. Phyllis Chapman turned 101. Mary and I were at her birthday party last year for 100, and this year, I couldn't go. I don't think you could go.
Stole my thunder, I went.
Oh, you went. All right, then I'll let you finish up, and then, I know I may steal Paul's thunder on this, but, you know, I know Mary, Paul, and I are just very mindful of the tragedy in Pittsburgh, and the, really, the jarring week, I think, the country faced last week. We're mindful of the fabric of this community, and that it's essential to support that, and we're mindful for each and every person that makes a contribution to that, from public safety all the way through to the staff here at Town Hall. You know, I know for myself, these sorts of events make you feel powerless, but I think that our demeanor, our respect for humanity, and the humanity in every person that we encounter, and our tendency toward kindness in every action we take goes a long way, so.
I'll put--
So, Phyllis's 101st birthday was last week here in Town Hall, and, you know, again, just a great Hingham day, and her exercise class from the senior center put it all together, and it was just a delightful, a delightful morning.
Tell the theme. What was the theme?
Well, the theme was Dalmatians, and I, of course, was having, you know, I was having a moment, and looking around, and I'm like, does she like dogs? And then somebody goes, oh, 101, and anyway, I was having, I guess, having a blonde moment. I had two other things. On a more serious note, I did wanna note the passing of Chrissanne Gregoire.
Oh, yeah.
Chrissanne was a longstanding resident of the town. She was a member of the school committee for 27 years. She served on building committees. She served on the council on aging, and I think even two years ago, she came in to interview for Talent Bank, because she wasn't done serving her town that she loved so much. And I would actually note that this Saturday at 10 o'clock at Old Ship, there will be a celebration of her life, but I just want to acknowledge the town's deep, deep affection for Chrissanne, and appreciation for really a lifetime of service to the town. She's made so many contributions, and we will miss her. And on a more happy note, you know, the Hingham Arts Walk was a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just gonna put in a plug, because, Bob, I don't know if you can--
Put it on here.
No, you can put it on.
Did you draw this, Mary?
No, this was drawn. You don't want my artwork. On my desk now, I have artwork from Max Bohan, who is 10 years old. He's a fifth grader at Plymouth River, and Max loves to draw, and Max loves to draw Hingham. And he made all kinds of cards and notes, and I have a beautiful 2019 calendar on my desk--
That's awesome.
--with all of those different pictures. And what I was so struck by was that--
So cute.
--Max really had the ability to capture the essence of Hingham in all those pictures. You know, here's December with Santa going into the square. And I will say that when Max delivered this to my house, a delightful young man, and he's interested in sports, and when he's not drawing, he's playing baseball and other things. I think he did very well at the Arts Walk. Carol, I know you're doing a feature story on him, and I know there are a lot of other wonderful artists out there. I will encourage Max to enter the button contest for the Fourth of July parade, because I think he will, his ability to capture Hingham, again, I think it just highlights some of the really just wonderful parts of this community, and, you know, to Karen's point, in a week where we've all been so jarred, I hope that it's these little aspects of our community that help us all make our way through some troubling times.
That is adorable.
Tomorrow's Halloween, so please be careful of the little people out there, 'cause it's dark early now. Last night, I attended a interfaith service in the Town Hall to join in a collective display of solidarity for the people who were murdered in the city of Pittsburgh over the weekend. And while I was there, I happened to speak to a fellow parishioner who remarked to me that, for the first time in her life, going to church, she looked around and she felt fear, wondering if, you know, there was somebody that might be out there that wished to visit harm upon her. To that end, the board, this board, is working with the town administrator and our public safety forces to assess the, all of the facilities in the town with respect to, you know, making sure that we're doing all that we can to protect people in these public gatherings, especially those in the religious context. You know, it's, you go there for solace and comfort, and just to be so overwrought, this isn't an isolated incident, this is happening all over the country, who knows where it could emerge next? So, you know, I just wanna thank the residents for their continued civility in the public discourse that we enjoy in this town. Yes, our patients can be tested at times, and we probably test yours as well, but I would ask that we continue to stay on the high road in how we exchange ideas, and, as I have said in the past, disagree agreeably. So, with that, I will bid you good night, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Go talks.